I keep thinking of the Cool Hand Larry Road Crew they had.
What we have here is a bigger than usual.
Yeah, most of them I think.
I would imagine they get a lot of requests.
And it depends, you know, it's volunteers. The prisoner gets credit for two days if he works.
Oh, wow.
He gets, you know, better food.
Usually the lunches are pretty well done.
Well, both times whoever hires you has to provide it. But it's better than, you know, three houses on the cobblestone.
They did a great job picking up trash. Wasn't that long after six or seven that they were picking up? They had big bags.
Amazing. When was traffic gone down?
Yeah.
It was still somewhere.
We missed a couple of small plates. And so they got those, but there was.
Did they get under the bridge? I know that's where it was.
Under.
Under Lake Ashar?
Yeah. They were working that way. I didn't see them down there per se, but they were working. I saw them at Kingsland. I saw them go all the way up the state line, turn around and come back to El Shahr. And then I saw later, I saw orange, big orange bags with more trash on them.
It's a red color.
Mandatory.
So the highway department can see them, pick them up.
That was really them in their jumpsuits. They were hiding. Waiting for the pickup truck.
Waiting for a pickup truck.
They had somebody lined up to go.
What a weird road. Interesting way to escape.
There's some hefty bags, though. Well, they might be. It would stand that lift. We'd say crazy stuff.
Even money sometimes.
Yes. A dollar bill.
I don't know why this is funny.
And he used to clean up.
A dollar bill is a rare find.
Everything I work with is family deals.
Yes.
You've moved to a two-camera setup. I just got my.
How you doing?
So you can direct between, can you cut back and forth on your?
I thought it was because you were bilingual.
What's that?
I thought it was because you were bilingual.
Without it.
One Spanish, one English?
Exactly. You're right. That too.
When I played recordball, I played it both times. I couldn't go back and fast enough. I just switched hands. Didn't lose a thing.
Wade, how do we like?
You're good.
Their just changed.
It's Tom.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to begin. All righty, a call to order the city council work session for the city of Bella Vista, Monday, April eighteenth. We'll just start from the top and go right through the agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive. This was for some police cars. You may remember that at the last minute, the chief found out that the 2022s that he thought was going to be available are not, and it's 2021. So we had to table it so that he would have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Kelly as well as the vendor and find out, are they 2021s? If so, do they, or do we get a price break, et cetera, et cetera? And so you'll see that pop up in the next one, and I'll move right to it, where it's an ordinance waiving the requirement of a formal competitive bid, and it's back to Superior for eighty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars for the purchase of three 2021 vehicles. So I saw Chief here.
I think he's talking about one lady.
I can speak a little bit to him.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
Now he's back.
It's your time for your cars. It's car time. So we're at the new ordinance where you're having to go back to 2021s, and did we get a price break, and et cetera, et cetera?
So I put, I don't know if it's in your packet, but I gave it to Jason as far as the pricing. It's not necessarily a price break. It's still a government price. It's not something that any citizen can get. But it's probably slightly above what the last bid waiver we had for those cars was, but it's very close.
So it's just a little over twenty-nine thousand?
For each car. And I think I spoke to a couple of council members before it even started. We just can't get cars. So our car guy, their car guys are making money. I don't blame them for that. They have to do that. But he's able to scrounge us up, you know, three 2021s, and hold them for us because we had this bid waiver. And, you know, I'm gonna have to just continue to work with them in the future and get them at the prices, best price. We can get them at, come to council, do bid waivers moving forward, because there's just, it's really hard getting vehicles now. They're not doing a lot of state bids on them.
I have a question. Are these actually new, even though they're?
They are brand new. Yeah, they are brand new. I think even in the packet, there says like ten miles or eleven miles. So they are brand new.
Well, the old bid was fifty-seven grand each, and this is twenty-nine grand each.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was my mistake. I put fifty-seven as a number I usually get me a car and all the equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. So the last time I put that in there, and I shouldn't have. I usually just try to get the approval for the cars from you, and then I have the equipment that I piece me on.
I thought that was too big a break.
Fully loaded.
Fully loaded versus just the car.
Yeah, the car is usually about twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and the rest is the equipment.
I think Jerry has a question for you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
There's four cars for two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, yet there's three cars for eighty-seven?
Yeah, so that was just brought up. So the four cars for the two-hundred and change, that was at fifty-seven apiece because that's a car and the equipment. Okay. That was my mistake. I usually just ask for the money for the car. Well, the money's already there. I usually ask for the approval to buy the car because it's over ten grand, obviously. But usually the car is about twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-eight thousand, and the rest is the equipment to put in the car. Okay, so what you're seeing now is three cars at twenty-nine and change, so it's eighty-some thousand for three cars, because that's just the car.
So I guess we couldn't give four.
He doesn't have four. He doesn't have four.
Yeah.
Even though the council's authorized me to buy four, I'm gonna have to go back to him in my budget. I'm gonna have to go back to him and say, okay, let's try to find me one more, and then I'll come back to you for a bid waiver for one more, whatever we can find to add.
Are there any questions?
You know, I don't have a question. I just noticed, I guess I missed it before because I'm sure it was in another packet. So I didn't know Arkansas doesn't have like a cooling off?
No, they don't.
Deal. So when you buy it, it's yours no matter, is it lemon, huh?
They got a lemon law.
Oh, they do.
They got a lemon law. That's just something else, yeah. Arkansas's got a lemon law.
Okay. I guess. You can't take it back just because you don't like it. Right. Okay.
Well, usually there's different laws for consumers versus the business anyway. A lot of consumer protection laws don't apply to others.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next. It's an ordinance waiving the requirement of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of corrugated metal drainage culverts based on price and availability by informal price quotes through calendar year 2022. This is for some work that Superintendent Button wants to do on Highlands Boulevard. I should mention to you that the state comes in and inspects bridges, and they consider culverts. Does it have to be three or more?
It's just any drainage conduit that spans over twenty foot.
Is considered a bridge.
Could be a box culvert, culverts.
Right. So Mike keeps his eye on them, and then the state comes in, and usually Mike's already caught it, and he's got it lined up. Do you want to speak to this at all, Mike?
If anybody's got any questions.
He's given you a breakout and a memorandum in your package?
You talk about corrugated metal. Historically, they've always been galvanized.
Same thing.
Well, it's not necessarily the same.
This is a, this is actually a poly pipe, so it's got the poly coating on it, so it'll last.
Well, it's called a CMP. It's not a metal. It's a plastic irrigation. Poly, HTPD or HP.
That's a plastic pipe.
Yeah.
This is a metal pipe.
So this is metal or not?
Yes.
Is metal?
It's a metal pipe with a poly coating. It's a coated pipe.
Okay. So so unless you cut the pipe for some reason to shorten it or adjust the length, then it should be protected from rust and corrosion.
Correct.
Any other questions? I should point out that staff has asked for third and final on both of those, the police cars and on the culverts.
So this is, both of these are, this is a budget item, isn't it?
Yes. We move into a resolution appointing three people to the tree advisory board for three-year terms ending in 2025. Are there any questions at all? Okay, we'll move to the last resolution, which is related to the fire department, to enter into a contract not to exceed a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents with Stryker Medical pursuant to a NASPO cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of four cardiac LifePack fifteen V4 monitors for use by the fire department. Chief, do you want to tell us what a LifePack fifteen V4 monitor is? I imagine it's not a car. It's not a four-seven. About the price of a car, isn't it?
Yeah.
A little bit more than a car, actually, probably. So you got a document with that as well that kind of tells a little bit about that? What the cardiac monitor is, it's a combination of, I've done several things. It's what we use on the ambulance, pretty much ninety percent of the time. When we go on an ambulance call, we hook somebody up to a cardiac monitor. Most of the time, just look at their heart rate and so forth. We're able to take the blood pressure, put the pulse ox on them. So it reads that as well. It reads on carbon dioxide. It might be in the bloodstream if we end up in a carbon dioxide situation. We can hook that up as well and read that as well. We do cardiac pacing with it, defibrillation. So if we have somebody in cardiac arrest, or if we have somebody whose heart's not beating right, then we hook that device on them, and we turn that on, and it will pace for them. It will defibrillate, so as in cardiac arrest and ventricular fibrillation. V-tach or something like that, we can control with that as well. That's how we just monitor the heart as we go. We can also look at the wavelength of their CO, CO2 in the bloodstream, and their oxygen levels and so forth. We can watch those waveforms to make sure. It's all, it's basically an ER monitor to look at in the yard that's in the back of an ambulance. And these are replacing ones that were bought back right prior to the ambulance servicing corporation, for those who remember that. Right before it went into the city of Bella Vista, they bought a lot of equipment to get the city up for the next ten years or so, and that's basically what these are replacing, four of those monitors.
It's considered standard equipment nowadays.
It is standard. It has been standard on the ambulance system for many, many years, the cardiac monitor. They just come in different phases. So to go back eleven years, because we purchased these in 2011, early 2011, right before the ambulance service went into the city in twelve, they purchased these, and they purchased three ambulances, and that's how we got the three ambulances to, you know, to spread out amongst our stations. But we've always had cardiac monitors, but these are, these monitors that come out were some of the state-of-the-art monitors that nobody in the area had at the time. So we were able to look at things and determine and make diagnoses with those monitors early on, you know, ten years ago.
So what this effectively does, Chief, is upgrade the system you have now to current technology.
That's correct.
Life expectancy, five years, ten years?
They, we use or replace them around the ten, eleven-year mark, so we'll keep them for about ten or eleven years. And they're usually, and think about it, we'll use the monitors we currently have before we're replacing on our engines. So we'll put those monitors, we can still use them. They're still good. We still keep them maintenance, but they're old, eleven years. We want, you know, a better version, a newer version to be able to, you know, look at the person's heart, so. Okay. Any questions at all? And that's in the, it's in the capital projects. It's in the long-range plan of replacement equipment for the ambulances. Thank you, Chief.
Sounds good.
There will be one more item for you to consider on the agenda, and it's the first discussion item, which is a resurfacing bid, and Superintendent Button wants to walk you through. Mike?
Yeah, of course, basically the bid opening for that is actually tomorrow. I would have liked to have all the results where you guys could look at them this evening, but because I first set that bid up on the ARC, their protocol for how you do that, so it took a little bit longer time. But of course, then you all decided to do, go a different route, but my bid was already out. So that's the reason that the results are not coming this evening.
So you were faced with different bid rules?
Correct.
For the American Rescue Plan?
That's correct.
Because you had to follow federal rules?
That is correct.
But you'll have it open tomorrow, and then we'll be ready to go for the council meeting.
That's correct.
Next Monday.
Basically, that, I mean, you're talking, it's about like sixty miles that's on that bid packet. That's actually the most that we've ever put out. And, you know, the expectation is obviously that the bids are gonna be a lot more than they were last year. You know, I told you when I was asking for the ARC money, you know, that I, you know, the crystal ball says probably somewhere in the thirty to thirty-four percent increase from what our prices were last year. And we'll see if that holds true when we do those bid openings tomorrow.
Mike, just so I know, is this for overlay and slurry seal or just overlay?
Yes, both. Both applications.
Is it possible we'll have two low bidders, one for the slurry and one for the overlay?
It is.
It's possible. Okay. Although for the past few years, there's only been one slurry ever.
Actually, last year on the slurry, we had another player coming out of Joplin, Missouri that bid on it, so we actually have two bidders for the slurry application. Which is good.
So, well, I guess the council will probably get a heads up Thursday when the packet comes out, or is?
Yeah, Jason will prepare it.
Assuming, assuming we have a budgeted item here, but if the bids should for some reason come in exceedingly high, above expectation, do we, are we able to carve that down into a budget level implementation without compromising or rebidding?
Yeah, I believe that in your packet, you should have my bids backed, and they will refer to, the city has the right to either add quantities or delete quantities based on what we have within our budget. And I do that every year.
But usually there's some limitation as to how much you can add, how much you can deduct without affecting the bid prices.
Well, really, they need to just be deductive alternates, not additive alternates.
Right.
The, the so obviously, we get those bids in so much of our square yard. Is that how the bids come in?
The slurry comes in by the square yard, and the asphalt's done by the ton.
So you can buy up to, run out of money for it, based on that.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's not, we're not committed to a certain number. It's just as needed through the end of the contract, right?
That is correct.
At a certain price.
Okay.
So we don't buy any more than our budget allows. So see what I mean? We've got a certain amount of budget. We're gonna pay a certain amount per unit.
But we've still estimated the quantities.
Yeah, and he's estimating, yeah, he's estimating how much he'll, how many linear miles he can do with that.
Contractor's anticipating a certain amount of work, and so that will generate a price, and if we cut it in half, because the prices have doubled.
Well, if it exceeds the budget, then there are certain things we can do, if it's within a certain range of the existing budget, but if it totally blows the budget, then we'll have to do something else altogether.
Well, I think he was asking if the price changes, if the quantity is too low.
Well, basically, what I do is I try to anticipate that price as close as I can by doing my research, talking to the vendors and that type of thing. And I also kind of, I cushion it a little bit. I mean, I don't try to get right on the money. You know what I'm saying? That way, I always like to add instead of take away, because you're correct. The vendor, the person that bids on it, they're not gonna be too happy if I cut, you know, one million dollars out of something that they bid on, so.
Or cut twenty-five percent out.
Correct.
That profit margin is based upon a hundred percent of the project.
Right.
Yes, you can reduce some percentage down instead of still come out whole.
Not that we've been doing every year.
Yeah. So this list that we were provided, the bids that we'll be receiving will be to cover everything that you've got on that list, right? That is correct. Okay. Have we, I mean, this question, have we ever completed the whole entire list in a, in a calendar year? Do we complete it every year? You know, I mean, what you're projected to do, are we? Yes. We have. Okay. Well, that's good.
We usually exceed it, don't we?
We normally add to, and that's what I just explained. This is a little bit different this year, so.
May not be adding this year.
I'm pretty confident that we're not gonna be cutting the streets. I will say one thing about that list. There's always poss, that's not set in stone, that list that y'all got, because there's different reasons why streets can come off of there, so and I can go into those if you want, but there's just all kinds of different reasons why something, why the, not the amount of money, but the actual list itself can be kind of shuffled around.
Since the overlay is on a price-per-ton basis, when the paver goes down the street, the workman running the paver can determine what the thickness is.
No, we determine what the thickness is.
And so is that a specified item?
It is.
And?
We specify the amount of tons that go on a street. Sometimes they come under, just a little under, and maybe just a little over, but we monitor. We have people in the field to make sure that the amount of tonnage that they're putting on the street is exactly, or close to what we got on the spreadsheet.
And that tonnage is based upon what assumption?
It's based on the width and depth of the asphalt, the width of the street, the depth of the asphalt.
And that's, and you're getting down to the core that I'm looking for. What's, knowing that all the streets vary in width, what is your normal target depth that they're to place in the overlife?
It depends on the street. Each street can be individual.
And so when you go and look at Street A, it has a certain tonnage listed in your bid form?
That is correct.
Right. So that's your target. How does the kind, how do you know, who knows what thickness they should be laying that at on that street then?
The city knows that because I put it on the spreadsheet, that that's what, that's the tonnage that they're gonna put down on that street.
So the thickness is shown someplace?
Yes.
Your target. So the contractor knows, the inspector knows.
Yeah, it should be on your sheet there that I sent you back.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mike. So I'll have that ready for you for next Monday. In your package, there's a presentation that Emily's going to give us on what has the Bella Vista Trails manager accomplished? With your helmet and your bicycle, and ready to go.
That's me. You guys all have a copy of the packet?
I do.
Awesome. Okay. I'll have some more copies if you need one.
It's a polished report.
Thanks. So just to introduce myself to everyone, in case you don't know me, my name is Emily Guffin, and I am the Trails Manager for the city. And the purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of my position and what I've accomplished so far in this position. I started back in September, so I'm approaching month number nine, so have accomplished a fair amount and still have lots more to accomplish and many more goals. So during the nine-month period so far, I found that my work sort of goes into five main categories, and those five categories are project and grant management, community engagement, planning, trail maintenance and enhancement, and event coordination. So I'll touch on a few highlights for each of these categories just to keep it brief. You'll find more details in the packet, so feel free to review that when you have more time. So for project and grant management, I am in charge of pretty much all projects that are related to trails, so that includes any new soft surface trail, such as a new Rillington Trail, any new trailheads, the tree planting along the Blowing Springs to Metfield Greenway, as well as the Mercy Way Bridge Project. So for the Mercy Way Project, for example, I'm in charge of the budget for that project, and as you know, it's a hefty budget, about a little under eight million dollars. So I keep track of invoices. I seek reimbursement from RDOT. I provide grant reports to all of the funding sources that we have. And then I work with the contractor to ensure that we meet our timeline and the project is meeting standards, and then that will come in at or under budget. The next category for community engagement, what I do for this is I actively work to try to involve community members in all things trails. So that involves working with volunteers on trail maintenance through the Friends of Arkansas Single Track Trail Adoption Program, interacting with both residents and with visitors via social media, spreading the word about everything that trails have to offer via the city's new series in the weekly Vista. I don't know if you guys have seen, we have had two stories so far. The third one will be coming out soon, also with Bennett Horn, so thank you, Bennett. And then also working with local nonprofits, such as the Bella Vista Foundation, and also the Bella Vista Arts Council to add color and excitement to our trails. My goal in this area, the community engagement area of work, is to just make sure that all residents are heard, that their voices are heard, that their needs and desires are being addressed by the city, and that they feel that they can be a part of the trails community, even if they're not a mountain biker, or a runner, or a hiker, or any of that. They can just go out and stand or watch birds, or do whatever they want to do. Next category is planning, and that involves all types of planning. So regional planning, local planning, and the development review type of planning. So for regional planning, I work very frequently with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, and I also serve on the board for the Razorback Greenway Alliance. And that involves just, I'm making sure that Bella Vista is at the table for regional conversations that were included in their plans, and that our priority connections are shown in the regional plans. For local planning, I work with the POA and Trailblazers, City of Bentonville, OzTrails, to make sure that the city also has a seat at the table for those important trail conversations. It feels like in the past, Bella Vista has been left out of a lot of conversations, and so I'm trying hard to make sure that what we want is reflected in what other people are saying. And then last part of planning is reviewing development plans for all new trail projects, so that includes looking at trail proposals to make sure they're up to code, and then also making sure that they're in line with our general plan and trails plan. I'm pretty proud that within the eight months I've been in this position, we've already added five new miles of trails, three miles of which are trails suited for families and people walking, not necessarily mountain biking, though they're also open to mountain biking, and then we're also working to add one more trailhead, so hopefully that trend will keep going. All right, next category is trail maintenance and enhancement. And so for trail maintenance, prior to my role, trail maintenance issues were reported in a variety of ways, and also to a variety of people. Some of, some people of whom were not related at all to the trail issue, and so in my position, I have worked to be the person who receives all trail maintenance requests, and then I delegate that request to the appropriate party. The appropriate party could be the POA, a volunteer, Trailblazers, the city, et cetera. And having a sole spokesperson definitely expedites the process and helps to resolve maintenance issues much more efficiently than going all over the place. And then lastly, last part of my job is working with event promoters and organizers, just to make sure that events run smoothly on Bella Vista Trails. So that involves helping organize their plan, the event course, working with police and EMS to make sure that all participants of the event are safe, and that drivers on the roads are aware that an event is happening. And then lastly, also making sure that trash and flagging and any other sort of event materials are removed within a quick timeframe after the event, so that our trails are. within a quick timeframe after the event, so that our trails are, are green for other people to use. So going forward, I have a lot of goals for this position, but I found that all my goals are sort of related to the one idea of how can we better put Bella Vista on the map? I'm sure everyone knows that Bentonville is very famous for mountain biking, it's the mountain bike capital of the world, but in reality, it seems that most of Bentonville's trails are actually in Bella Vista. So I'm trying to, to think about how we can ensure that people are visiting and returning to Bella Vista, not just Bentonville, time after time, and then also how we can use Bella Vista's trails to increase Bella Vista's economic base. So that, those are, those are two big goals and then, then lots of other goals. And then the last two pages of the packet are just a piece of one of the things I do for community engagement, and that's just producing monthly trail count reports. So I've attached an example of the March 2022 trail count report. So as you can see in the report, we recorded a total of thirty-two thousand users for just that one month, thirty-one days, which works out to an average of a little over a thousand users per day, which in my opinion is, is a huge number. I'm pretty happy with that number. And if you look at how it compares to 2020 and 2021, 2022 numbers are the highest yet. So that shows that Bella Vista is still a popular place to visit.
How did we determine that number?
How do we determine them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have trail counters, electronic trail counters on our trails, we have ten of them, and they basically sense motion.
Well, that's, that's all you, you don't have somebody out there.
No, no one's on there, no.
It's just like, it's like a magic count, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, very similar.
Now, Steve had a clicker, he just grew up.
That's where you got your carpal tunnel.
That's it. Sorry, Emily.
Yeah, so that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
One question is, in, in looking at the goals and, and goals for the future, how does that, how does that fit? Are you familiar with our 2040 plan that we've adopted? There's a lot of stuff on trails in that plan.
Yeah.
And so how does this fit with that plan? And, and is the plan good as far as your seven months of vision now of what we have versus what the plan says?
Yeah.
So it's a lot of questions all in one, but.
No, no, that's a great question, and that's a big part of my position, because we have that plan, and then we also have the 2015 Trails Plan. And so I, I am reviewing both of those as we go along to make sure that all new proposals and, and when we communicate as a staff, to make sure that we're developing new proposals that are in line with those plans. For the 2040 plan, absolutely, we are looking to follow a lot of the goals in there that are related to trails and transportation and increasing connections to hubs throughout Bella Vista. So absolutely, that's, that's a big part.
You have a degree in planning, do you know?
I have a master's degree in planning, yep. Yes, councilmembers, no?
Is there any way to measure the economic impact on an, from an event or maybe on a quarter basis? The trails had this much economic impact on Bella Vista? Is there any way to come up with those kind of numbers?
Yeah, there is, there are a variety of ways to determine that. And Brandon Kelly with Discover Bella Vista actually already produces some reports related to that. And the OzTrails Offroad, which unfortunately isn't happening this coming year, but for their 2021 event, also produced a report showing the economic impact of that event on trails. And most of the way that they quantify that is through the hotels, the lodging, via hotels or Airbnbs or friends, restaurant, people that tend to go into restaurants, gas purchases, all of that. So there, there are ways to quantify it, though it's a lot of estimation.
Is there a way that Airbnb's track, like, an increase in occupancy during an event?
We just, you know, hired Granicus Company, you know, to help us identify the short-term rental properties that we have in Bella Vista. So, you know, historically in the past, we probably, you know, we don't have any data on that, but moving forward, you know, we should be able to. I could tell you, we've had weekends where we've, we've had like, especially during events, where we've had like a most a hundred percent occupancy of our short-term rentals. I mean, there's the, you know, usage of those is, is tremendous.
Yeah, and I'll tag, tag on to that, that with the trail count reports and with the Granicus data, I think we could get a lot more data on visitor usage versus resident usage on trails, because we can look at a certain weekend that, whether it's spring break weekend or President's Day or July 4th, and compare the Airbnb usage to the trail count usage and determine how many of those users were here for the trails.
Yeah, we could also, you know, do counts of usage, you know, on, whenever we have some type of activity going on, right? Versus weekends when we don't.
Exactly.
You know, and see what the occupancy is. But as I said, we're just kind of going down that path right now, so.
Yes.
I have a statement and a question. First of all, I'd like to say that it's super clear that our decision to make your position full-time was the correct one. And the one thing I found out, I was really shocked at, is the number of volunteers in TAP. I don't remember what the number was, but it's incredibly high, and it's, interestingly enough, it's way higher in Bella Vista than Bentonville.
Yeah.
I thought it was like a hundred eighty or something, it was some high number.
I think it might even be right over two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are volunteers that are helping with the trail, helping to keep it fixed up and whatnot. Because we're all concerned about the, you know, maintenance costs and whatnot.
Looking at other things.
But, yeah, the number of people, and some of them aren't bikers, they're, they're just people living near the trail and offered to, you know, help with that area, but I thought that was pretty cool.
I, I think the volunteers are great.
Would, would anybody other than me think that it would be? Because that seems to be the number one complaint from the trails complainers, is that what is costing Bella Vista and we're not getting any kind of return from it.
Well, we get return, believe me.
So I mean, would it, would, wouldn't it be beneficial to us to have a, a number, some kind of a number, maybe on a quarterly basis or something, some kind of a number periodically that, that we could provide to the media that, that?
But we've just really gotten the source where we're able to start, you know, tracking something like that with a little more.
Last time we had hard numbers was 2018.
Yeah.
When, I'm trying to remember her name, was doing her thesis.
Down at U of A.
Down at U of A, and she went out and I think she interviewed three hundred and eighty people. And she was able to figure out how much are they spending every day just by talking to them, and then extrapolating and using statistical analysis. And the number, I think, was two hundred and seventeen or two hundred and seventy-one dollars a day. And so when you multiply by the number of people we've got here, yes, there definitely is. And when you talk to Alums and some of the restaurants, they're seeing more and more cyclists coming in and spending money.
Well, the other thing is, I don't think you're ever going to get an accurate number. All the realtors say it's had a huge effect on the real estate. I mean, there's a real estate boom a lot of places, but I, every realtor I've talked to said, there's no question, it's, it's made a big difference.
Homes on trails, you know, it's had about the same effect on them as it had, you know, homes on lakes or homes on golf courses. You know, anybody you talk to that has homes on trail, and homes on trails are highly desired.
Yeah.
They are, so.
Steve?
Emily, thank you for your presentation, very concise and thoughtful, thank you for doing that. I know that it's, a lot of times when we're talking about these trails, people's first thoughts go to what's the economic impact? But for me, the number one benefit of the trails in Bella Vista is the fact that Bella Vista residents get to use them. I use them, my family uses them, my neighbors use them, there's probably twenty kids on my block that run the trails to have fun. When I'm out there on the trails myself, I do probably more hiking than I do mountain biking. I like to take my dog in the woods. And I like to talk to the people out there, and I love running into Bella Vista residents. And so for me, economic impact, that's great, and we should be thoughtful about that. But for me, the number one benefit is the fact that we get to use those trails.
Yeah.
We've been through two years of pandemic, and the trails have represented freedom to a lot of people, to me, for sure. I can't imagine a better place to live through the pandemic than Bella Vista, Arkansas. I think about people that don't even have a back porch, that live in an urban area and don't really even have a back porch to sit on. For us to have this kind of freedom and this kind of adventure and this, this natural environment to, to be present in, I think is so valuable to our residents.
You know, when we go back to the economic development drive as well, we've all seen that tire and its development. And I know Tim Robinson well enough that he would not be giving any ugly of capital if he didn't think it was going to work, uh, work for him. And then where the Legion was, is going to be a pub called Shredder's. And it's called that because when you're on the trails, you tend to shred your tires on the rocks. And so that's going to drive more economic development. And I think, Doug, aren't you doing an in-house administrative review from the gentleman that's bought it? It doesn't have to go to the planning commission.
That depends on how extensive the remodel is, but we are looking at it.
Yeah, and he's got a lot of plans, he's going to use a lot of the existing things like the outdoor, outdoor at the back. He's even talking of perhaps putting in a drive-in coffee thing by take, using a container, if you've seen the one off 279 that's in Gravit. And so he's got lots of great ideas, but again, it's all driven by the, by the bikers and the hikers and the runners.
Steve is a burn to the kids on his street, about twenty or so that use it. I, I am the kid on my street, that's what it's worth. And it's pretty amazing, you know, I mean, I'm a good liar, I'm like sixty-four, right? And everybody's, that's, that's, the number of people who are seventy, seventy-five, or maybe even more, I'm really surprised up and down the street how many actually go. So I live over by Scottsdale Golf Cart Parking Lot. So, you know, that's a great place to park and for people to go either direction, right? And, you know, they walk down the bottom of the hill, and, and walking along the creek is really nice route. It's really nice and flat, pretty, it's secluded. I was out a day of snow and ice, like, I think the first day we had, and I thought I'd be the only person. And I drove my, because I love to walk on, I really do, it's just really peaceful, it's nice, it's quiet, it's a little chilly layer up close, not a problem. There were six cars in the Collin Hills Parking Lot that day, people went down and parked and still were out walking those trails. It was really surprising.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and so, yeah, very nice presentation, I appreciate it, I can tell you, you're getting a lot done, you're really involved. I do have a question about the Razor, the Razorback Greenway. And, you know, so when we went to the bridge groundbreaking.
Yep.
And there was a representative of the Trailblazers there, and he talked about the future plans of going up into, like, Jane and Missouri and on up that direction. Where it goes past that, I don't know, but that's the future vision. But it was kind of like important to me that, that crossing Little Sugar Creek or the, the bridge on 340 might be an impediment to doing that. Do you know anything about that? And if it is an impediment, would you be involved in trying to help find a solution for that, if it is?
Yeah, I would absolutely be involved with anything related to the Razorback Greenway. I'm currently working with planning staff and then also the Trailblazers and Aaron Rushing to determine an alignment that goes up through the Sugar Creek Valley as opposed to going elsewhere in Bella Vista to sort of create the backbone of active transportation. And so we're, we're looking at options right now to sort of follow Sugar Creek and then do get up to the bridge on Lake Ashire at 340. And so we'll be addressing all of the impediments that we cross there, and there are a lot of impediments, so, yeah, that will be part of my job.
Pretty confident they can figure it out.
I sure hope so, yes, I'm, I'm confident, we're going to get it done, and, and hopefully it will be within a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Our 2040 plan has lots of things for alternative transportation in the city. It emphasizes a bus service, it emphasizes cycling along the roadways. And is there, and, and it suggests, I think, some areas where we plan for that to be done along the roadways. And I've been talking about with Alderman Flynn and, and his crew, challenging them as to what are they doing in this year's paving program to complement and actually conform with what the 2040 plan tells us to do.
Yeah.
About adding trails or adding width to pavements, and that, that's a whole, whole separate challenge, but I think the challenge can be met. Personally, I've done some of that on my own, but for widening of the roadway, not for bicyclists, but the function is the same. And we have many areas of our arterials that are suitable for that.
Yeah.
It's a matter of the methodology and implementation for it. And then you may go and get a mile of widening, and then you hit a half mile where you can't widen. But you can deal with that, I think, in the planning and the, and the actual implementation process. So how does that fit into your program here? Have you talked at all with Mike about it and the street committee about how to go after some of those things?
Yeah, that's a great question, I have absolutely thought about it. I feel that Bella Vista has a really great soft surface trail system right now, but a very poor on-road active transportation network, and that includes sidewalks and bike lanes. And we have the Blowing Springs to Metfield path, which is wildly successful, you see everyone using it. But pretty much all other roads are, are very unsafe for walking and biking unless you live on a local neighborhood street. And so within the planning department, we're looking at roads that would provide the best connection for the highest number of people from neighborhood centers to trailheads to shopping closets, commercial corridors. Looking to see if we could develop, at a minimum, sharrows, like the, the symbol painted on the road, but ideally bike lanes or even separated bike lanes, or, or even a side path similar to the Blowing Springs to Metfield Greenway. So that way we can get more people safely from their house to whatever destination they want to get to, as opposed to driving their car a half mile to get there. I have not talked to Mike, actually, but that, that's a fantastic idea. And I think if we pursued some of the federal grant opportunities that are out there together, I think that we could definitely accomplish some of those in the near term, future, honestly.
Twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, we actually brought in HAF.
Yep.
And they were looking at coming down Rogers Road onto Chelsea path, H A L F F.
I think so, yeah.
And, and going up Chelsea, because on, on Sunday, there were a lot of people who ride their bikes on Chelsea, because they like the curves and the hills, but it's, it's not safe.
It's not safe, not safe for the driver or the, or the bicyclist.
Some people walk their dogs right down the middle of Chelsea as well.
And so they actually put together a whole plan where they would have off-road, separate sidewalks, for lack of a better word, to help them get up the hill and then come down. And they went all the way around Chelsea, and then they looked at Reardon, because they were trying to get down into the commercial area, and Reardon is bad, Reardon has nothing. And so they actually, they actually found a potential trail that they could put, put through the bush that I think is now part of, of Little Sugar. And so they did all this, and the price tag was, I think you remember this, John, it was about three point one, three point two.
Yeah, it was pretty, pretty high.
Doug, Doug might have been here too. And so I, I went cab in hand and had a discussion with the Walden Family Foundation, and they basically said, perhaps another day. But, yeah, you're right.
But I, I like Emily's idea to really study the city and, and there's different connections you'd like to make and to figure out which are, which are the best to do fir, you know, would get the most people off the road.
Tie it into the 2040.
Because you'd have to do a little study to figure out, because you know you can't do them all right away. And that way you could figure out, hey, this is one that's really, would be good to start with.
Exactly.
Plus the federal grants would be great, obviously.
All righty, thank you very much, Mr. President.
If I could add something from the, from the newspaper standpoint, that she was talking about the series, when Emily and Cassie approached us about doing that, I was very excited about it because it not only, you know, provides me free content to fill space, but it's great local content. And then when I saw the list of story ideas that they had, I mean, it's, it's, not all of them are, you know, hey, we're going to go walk on this trail, here's this trail, and the last one we ran was Pat. And, uh, the last one we ran was Patty Irwin, who, uh, is, uh, an arborist and talked about the trees and, and foliage, uh, which I thought was very interesting. They're kind of, you know, a little bit outside the box, looking at trail systems, uh, and the people that use them and, uh, how they keep them going. We, uh, we run it the last Wednesday of every month, and they've got it planned out through December. Uh, went to our graphic, uh, artist and she put together a little logo. Uh, it's called The Dirt. Uh, they liked that suggestion and I loved it, you know? So, uh, it works good. And, uh, we're real excited to have it in there. We've gotten good comments about it. And, uh, it's, it's just not, it's not your average, uh, series, uh, trail series that you think about, but there's certainly a lot of good content in it, uh, I, I think. And I'm, I'm tickled to death that we've got it and I look forward to it, you know, every Wednesday, you know, and read it two or three times.
You read your own work?
Uh, every now and then I read mine, but I really read theirs. It's really good. But I'm glad that we're able to, to supply space for that.
One last question. You've got ten trail monitors that are counters out there. Are those accessible by your cell phone? Do they report daily with numbers or how do, how do you extract the data from there?
Yeah, so I collect them on a monthly basis, uh, with my computer. Uh, so I just go, go to them. There's a magnetic key that I have that transfers the data from the counter to my computer.
So you have to physically.
Yep.
Visit the station sites.
Yep.
They're strapped to trees, are they not?
Yep, they're strapped to trees. Yeah, you keep your eye out to see them. Yeah, you have a little map to, to go off of on the second, last page of the packet.
So, so how sophisticated is that electronic counting system such that you can get a call in daily on a cell phone or that you can interrogate it with your cell phone or that?
Uh, I don't believe you can access it via your cell phone, or at least I haven't figured that out yet. Uh, I can collect on a daily basis. It just involves me going there to download the data. Um, which is why I tend to do it more on a monthly basis. Um, but, but it is very dependable data and, and easy to collect with my computer.
Well, you give her a lot more money, she'd buy a more sophisticated system.
There you go.
Well, it seems to work out just fine, and she gets her exercise during the night.
Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we necessarily need that way.
You're not.
As to how, how we did collect the data and, and.
Can I ask you something?
Of course.
We'll let the elected people talk. Do we have, uh, circumstances happen a lot where our trail crossing mechanisms are damaged by vehicles? I know there's one that looked like that creamed off Reardon.
Yeah, and it's still down.
And, and so I, you know, it could be that happened and we don't know who did it, but, uh, I'm certainly willing to help. We can need to file claims on people's liability insurance so the city can get reimbursed for those, bringing those back.
Yeah, I, that we do have incidents with, uh, some of our trail crossing signs and the, um, for the string hybrid beacons. The one on Reardon was hit by a drunk driver. Um, and we actually did, um, get reimbursed by Geico for that. Um, the reason it hasn't been replaced yet is because that will be the location of a future tunnel. And so we figured it was a better investment for us to use that money for a different, um, part of the trail system and just have the tunnel go underneath the road, so.
But can we retrieve? Isn't there, isn't it still down?
No, it's been picked up.
Yeah, the, the damage part has been picked up.
There's a sign twenty yards short of it that is not down.
Maybe that's what I saw, okay, yeah.
And there's a yellow pill there.
The mechanism come down, but the sign went down later and it's still laying there.
Talking about those non-beacon signs, cause Doug and I were talking about one today. Who is responsible for the trail maintenance on those signs? Is it the city or is it actually the P O A based on our current agreement? And the P O A should then be out there finding the contractor to put it in play and we pay our, our fifty percent? Is that the way it works?
That's typically the way that it would work. Um, anything that's included within the trail license agreement, um, would be covered by, uh, the P O A and the city at fifty percent split, uh, for each party.
But is it actually the P O A?
So it's tricky.
Because they had the maintenance.
It's tricky because the trail, uh, license agreement only covers twenty feet on either side of the trail center line. Um, and so some of the trail crossing signs, the ones that say trail crossing ahead that are located fifty to a hundred feet in front of the, uh, the crosswalk, I don't believe are covered, but then the, uh, license agreement, because they're without, or, um, they extend beyond the, the twenty foot.
Those would be straight. Those are probably notification signs required by the.
By the M U T C D standard.
M U T C D, those are just like a school crossing or a speed limit sign or a fire crossing sign. Those are probably notifications.
Okay, fair ball.
So do, do we need to try and amend the agreement that we have then?
I mean, I, I, of course, it's, it's up to you, but I, I, I don't, uh, I'd have to go back and look at it, look at a particular circumstance, but I, I'm not sure that we need to, to look at changing anything. I, I mean, we have signs that get creamed by people driving all the time. And so it's, uh, something that, uh, we know how to deal with through making claims on each. Mike does it for street signs. In a case like this, it's just maybe seen between Emily and Mike who's gonna do that one because it's a, you know, may he, we don't wanna double up on something like that, or actually, I guess it would be Karen over at the street department. But, I mean, there have been times we just, in the past, I know we've just had, before Emily got here, we just kinda have a little, have a little chat and figure out who's gonna do what and, and get it done. I, I'm not sure we need to remake anything.
One, one last question. The crossing on two seventy-nine in front of the police department, uh, new facility, that's going to be relocated? Will all of those lights and everything get moved someplace else?
I actually wasn't aware that that was going to get relocated.
I don't blame them. Yeah, that's not gonna be moved, that's gonna stay.
Only the trail that's from, from the east side of the right away, the trail that crosses the property, is that the one that's gonna get rerouted?
So the trail that, yeah, the trail used to go through the police station.
Like through the building, right?
Now goes along the, uh, two seventy-nine, you come two seventy-nine and the building south and then goes into that, um, ravine, ravine area. Yeah. So it's not gonna go, yeah, it's, it's rerouted.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Mr. Burke, boat storage, and I understand you and Mr. Tap have been talking about.
We had a chat about it today. You know, this, uh, came from a resident, uh, who had received a notice of a violation. And I'm sure everybody on the council gets these calls from time to time, somebody wanting to know if there's anything we can do to help them. Of course, the first thing you do is look at, you know, what does the ordinance say? Make sure you understand that part of it. Uh, so in a, this is a specific example, but it, it kinda did get me thinking that I thought it'd be good for us to have a conversation around a, a more, a broader conversation around the kinds of things where there's replication between the A C C and the city. And in some cases, uh, are there things that we're doing, maybe we adopted it from the A C C when the city was first formed? And should we revisit some of those things that it might, uh, the benefit of it might be to take some of the load off of our inspector team? Uh, are there things that they're doing that maybe they just really wish they didn't have to do that? This, this picture that we're looking at here is, is kind of the, as I say, the specific instance. Twenty-five Scalloway Drive, uh, this gentleman's got a boat alongside his house. And it's kind of a nice setup, really. I could see where, you know, you look at that and go, you know, that's not offensive to me. Uh, I think what the ordinance says is it should be screened in all practicality, that there should be a fence in front of it, so that you can't see it in any way from the street. And, you know, when we cite somebody for something like this, there's a certain amount of bad will that comes with it. And there's part of me that wants to think, as a city, we wanna be recognized as, as the adult in the room, the responsible party when it comes to things like this. And that we might yield that lane to the A C C if there's certain things that they feel like are really important to keep the aesthetic quality. There are a few homes, obviously, they're not parked, not under the jurisdiction of the A C C. Not very many, though. And so when I looked at this, it made me start taking in broader context. Anybody find anything wrong with this particular setup? Gentleman's got a nice, you know.
Is somebody complaining or we're just picking on something?
Good question. I think typically, Doug, you do better at this than I would. Typically, it's based on a complaint.
You get a complaint on his boat? Okay.
And sometimes, you know, that could be dynamics between neighbors that are, you know. Yeah, it's not, it's not that somebody's really upset.
It wouldn't bother me at all, but people are people.
And anytime a code officer goes to look at this complaint, they're gonna look at everything on the way there, do a survey. Because if you write a notice to this gentleman, um, he's gonna talk to his neighbors, and if there's another boat that you didn't write a notice to, they're gonna be calling me and asking, well, why did you write him one and not me one? So everybody on the road, well, any violation seen on the way there back or a three sixty survey will get noticed.
Cause that seems like it's a long ways from the road.
Yeah.
It's almost in his backyard.
Is there a difference between what we do and what the N, A C C is looking for?
Yes.
As far as screening goes, I don't believe so.
It looks identical to me. I looked at both of them today. And this, for us, if, if there was interest in changing the specific, I'm, I'm interested in hearing, uh, council members', uh, comments on the specific case, but also on the more general approach. It would be easy to change the ordinance that doesn't require screening. Uh, it says vehicles, vehicles, and it describes in another part that that means most, such as that. May not be parked forward of the front of the house and must be screened with an opaque screen as defined in another section, opaque screen, fence or something of the like. Uh, so that any such vehicles may not be seen from any city street. That, that's tough for people. We live in a lake community, uh, this gentleman's gone out of his way to make a nice area. I wish we didn't have to give notice.
So let me ask this question, before we start going down this too far. How many of you are getting complaints about boats?
Zero. In twelve years.
I'm not receiving. I will say this, okay? I was excited for exactly the same thing before I was a city council member. Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know what the ordinance was, okay? Uh, and I was like, oh, okay, really? And I'm, so just from my perspective at the time is like, well, I don't really like it. Had to figure out something I was gonna do with my boat, right? And, but I said, I get it. It's like, sometimes you don't have to like what you understand. And I think it's kind of a slippery slope in a way. Because there's also not a house right next door to this. What if there's a house right next door? And two, you know, you say not forward to the house, or it has to be behind the house. So how far down the house is acceptable? There was a house. A gentleman took me by it. Uh, he had another thing going on with his wife, a business across the street and a home. He goes, can you get in the car with me? I wanna go show you a couple of things. And he showed me a couple scenarios, just like this. One of the boats, no joke, was like a thirty-two foot cruiser. That, the boat was bigger than the house. No, I'm not even exaggerating at all. So, and I think it's, 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 it's a probably a situation by situation kind of a thing, right? And it, it, and it's, I don't know where the slippery slope starts. You know, you start not policing this. I guarantee you, if you, especially if you make it known and all at once people can just put boats beside their house and not be shielded or whatever, you'll start getting calls. And when I saw this on the agenda, I was just noticing going up and down my street, right? I'm just looking. And if we just all at once have boats start showing up beside houses, it would cause an issue. So I hear you. Uh, I tell you though, so I'm from small town America, right? And you go into that town, drive around, and you'll find boats, and you'll find campers, and you'll find all kinds of, so it's not just gonna be boats. You're gonna, what about a, a trailer of some type or a pop-up camper? You're gonna start seeing all kinds of things, unless you designate it specifically to boats. You're gonna start seeing all kinds of stuff. And what's acceptable and what isn't. I personally like a clean aesthetic look of the community, personally. Again, I got cited, I found a solution for it. Didn't really like it at the time, but I got it. I understood it. So I, that's my feedback. If it came before the council to do something with this, I'll be honest with you, I don't know. I'd have to see, I had to see what, what the adjustment to the ordinance was. I don't know.
We, we had it way back when the fence thing came up. We went around and around and around for months. How tall can this fence be? Where can you put it? And what it could look like? And, you know, finally it got done, but it took a while. And then it turned around and exempted golf cart trailers. Well, but it was a long, six-month process to get everybody on the same page about screening your camper. And then if, if you, if you got it screened, was your screen high enough? Kind of thing. You know, someone even mentioned the little screening that's behind the police station because the little plastic shed that I bought for storage was two feet above the top of the fence. Everything else was great, except for the tape of the fence.
Do you get many, um, complaints about boats like this?
We get a fair amount, especially on years where they draw down a lake and everybody that has a boat on the lake.
Don't we make a, a special provision for that?
We do, we do, but they still don't stop the complaints. I mean, the, they still come and we go make a visit and we start a case, just in case the lake comes back up and the boat's still sitting there a month from now. But we do extend the grace period for that.
Larry, it's, it's my recollection that we, uh, we mistreat or treat boat owners and camper owners differently than we treat golf, golf enthusiasts who have golf cart trailers and golf cart, carts themselves on the trailers. And it's my understanding when the city went through a review of this part of our zoning code a, a number of years ago, and I know I spoke, spoke to, spoke to it at the planning commission, is that I wanted, I thought it would be appropriate for us to treat, because we have seven lakes, we have seven golf courses, to treat owners of boats in a similar fashion that we permit owners of golf carts and golf cart trailers. Because you can park a golf cart trailer with a cart on top of it right in your front yard. In fact, it can be up near the front of the house here. It doesn't have to be pushed to the back in a concealing process. You can park it right out in front. In fact, you can park it in front of your garage and it's legal.
Five by ten or smaller.
Right.
Is that, is that what it is? Cause I was thinking, uh, exactly that, I was looking for it in here, five by, five by ten. Uh, to Doug's point, nobody wants to see a thirty-foot, you know, giant boat on the side of any house there.
But you're not gonna get the clean scenarios. You're gonna get a thirty-two foot nineteen seventy-two pontoon, a team that hadn't been touched in twenty years. With stored stuff on it. I mean, I don't know, when you drove to Hawassee recently, but there's thirty-five-hundred boats in storage, uh, between here and Hawassee. And so I'm sure that those are all.
But I wonder if simply we could be more, less restrictive, let's say, just by increasing that footprint from five by ten to, you know, limit pontoon boats and things like that that would be unsightly. Oh. Go from five to ten, ten by twenty or something.
Yeah, that's probably a twenty-five foot trailer. I mean, you're gonna have to extend.
You think?
Yeah, the trailer's gonna, that won't fit in the garage.
Doug, even if we were to become more lenient, I don't suspect the A C C would become more lenient.
No, they wouldn't. But then, that's the A C C's problem.
Then they're gonna come and do their thing regardless.
Perhaps so. They didn't in this case. It was written by the city.
Can I? I, I was around. So, um, in fact, I wrote that. And so I, I was not fully behind the scene, but what, here, here's the general issue in Bella Vista that a lot of people have. They will have an aesthetic issue with their neighbor. They drive by and they see a boat. And before there was ever a city, they would contact the A C C about it because it violates some rule of the A C C or one of their policies. And it got to the point where they, they, they wouldn't do anything. Now, they've gotten a little more aggressive in their enforcement, but the complaint at that time was they're not doing anything.
They being?
They being the A C C.
Okay.
And so came to the city at one point through the council or the mayor at the time, I don't recall how it got generated, but they wanted the city to do something about this so they could go out and take care of this. And so the city adopted an ordinance and we went down this road because people wanted that controlled and there wasn't sufficient. You know, these are issues, these aesthetic things are issues that are made for private homeowners associations and POHs to deal with. This is what they do, the collar of the fence, the, can we see the boat? Does it have to be screened, all that? And we've got a situation in Bella Vista where they, maybe they don't like what's happening there. There's like this implied, I'm going to appeal to the city and get them to do it. And I, that's not necessarily the case, you know. We, we deal with public health, safety and welfare and we can do these things and we've done this. I would just caution you, i- if you change the rule, we've got one example, you will hear a hundred and fifty people that don't want it changed. Or you're going to, there'll be an article about, you're going to start allowing bigger boats and we don't want this. It will light a fire symbolically on, on stuff like this. Because people in this community, and rightly so, they want it to be neat, think that we're going to do something to make it less neat and they're not going to like it.
You're not going to be able to limit it to just boats. I guarantee you, there'll be another round of this. Well, my neighbor has this boat and it's this big. Well, I've got a pop-up camper and it's not even as big as that boat, but you won't let me park it there.
Right.
And okay, now we're going to allow pop-up camp. I don't know, I, and so it's a tough one, I get it, I really do. I mean, I bet.
Well, associated with that, you have a lot of lawn caretakers. And they have, some of them have single axle trailers, some of them have dual axle trailers. And they'll park those in their front yard, in their driveway on weekends and evenings. And it's an issue that unless it gets called in as a complaint item, that's another thing that's not, not acceptable by our code, as I understand. But it's, it's a, I have one in my neighborhood, he has a single axle trailer, he does lawn care. Well, he'll have the tractor sitting on there with his weed eater and everything parked in his driveway. Well, I don't think anyone's complained about it, but it is a thing. And it is, and not just in my neighborhood, there are others I've observed around the city, so.
One of the benefits also of having us pass an ordinance is if you're the office two doors down, that's the ACC, now they're not going to be concerned about it at all. So now they get to push all that off on the city.
Right.
So.
Concentrated on councils.
Well, I will say this, they have, the ACC does not do nothing now. I, regularly, they are filing new lawsuits against people subject to the covenants. I've seen several for basically what we would call unsightly unsanitary conditions on a lot. They have a lot more, they can be a lot more general and use a lot more power in that. They don't have to follow the constitution we do as the government. So they can hold people to the private agreements and they have a lesser burden of proof and, and all this sort of stuff. And so they're able to pursue that through private counsel and they do that. And that helps what we try to do. You know, I don't, we don't really communicate, I don't know that we directly communicate with one another about those things. I just see where they get filed in court. And I was surprised last year to see how many they are filing. And so, anyway, that's, they're, they're doing things now.
Fair enough. I almost wince, I, I agree certainly with the comment that a lot of these aesthetic things are, are better served not by the city because it just doesn't serve us that well, I think. And I think it would alleviate the load some on code enforcement people, that they can go after things more important than this. And I, and I wince anytime I see the wording in the, in the city ordinance that's equal to the ACC. And, and Jason, I think the fire has been started already. I think the fire was started with white fences.
Well, that's possible.
And this, and this would be an opportunity for the city, not just this single case, but in other ordinances as well, that we might review it and say, you know what? We don't really need to be in that business. The ACC can take that lane. That's my thoughts. John, Jerry, anything?
The only problem with ACC is they're lack of consistency in whatever they do.
Arbitrator capricious, you might say.
Yeah, arbitrar.
But see, they, they can be and we cannot be.
I know.
And that, you know, citizens shouldn't be treated that way, of course.
I saw Jason's opinion on the situation and I think it got around to Doug and Doug's already familiar with a complaint on the east side involving a, a commercial, property zone commercial, but yet it's a residence that someone, that people are living in. And they've got construction equipment, trailers, vehicles parked out in front of the residence. My question was, which, which applies there? If you've got a, a commercial, property zone commercial that someone is living in as a residence?
What standards are they expecting?
Well, which situation applies the commercial or the residential? So I mean, are they in violation with these vehicles being parked in front of the residence? Did I read, did I read that a, that vehicles have got to be parked behind the location?
Well, the, the, the ordinance that we were talking, what I chatted to you about on the email, talks about requirements in residential zones. So if it's a commercially, so we've got to look at the zoning map and see, we may have a property that is residentially zoned, or excuse me, that is, that is commercially zoned, but, but has a pre-existing house on it that's allowed to continue because it was pre-existing non-conforming. So if it's zone commercial, then they're not going to be subject to that statute that talks about, or the ordinance that talks about parking locations in residentially zoned lots. Because it's not a residentially zoned lot, even though someone may be living in it as a resident. So that was the circumstance I talked to you about. And I, I would want to look at whatever individual circumstance you had going on that we need to look at the zoning and figure out what they were doing. And, you know, it'd be very fact-specific. If that's what code enforcement does, they go out there and look at that stuff.
There's more than, more than one individual is complaining about this particular location. And I don't know if it's, if it's because of the people who live there or if this because of the actual situation.
Are they complaining, are they calling code enforcement? I, I, you know, I, I, people can certainly call their alderman, but man, we can get it. If they call the city office where the people are, they go to enforce and drive out there and look at it, we can get a lot more done, you know.
Well, I'll tell you the number one complaint that I, that I hear from people is the inability to make contact with someone in the community development. And if they leave a message, they do not ever hear anything back from the message they left.
Well, I can't speak to that, but if they have an example, I'm sure we'd want to know about it. Can't speak for Doug, I know if anybody's tried to call, reach me, I want to know about it.
Three code officers that are in the field typically from nine to four and building inspectors as well. They all have voicemails and emails and, I mean, if somebody's not calling you back, let me know and we'll. People expect to call within minutes when the whole system, once you even get started, you're looking at three, four weeks or whatever, people expect it, bing, 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 just get it all done and they don't understand it takes time.
Well, I realize that if you had someone, if you had a person answering the phone or phone calls coming in, it would be impossible probably for one person to answer all those calls that are received in a day's time. I'm sure that it just wouldn't happen. But, I mean, from my own personal experience, it's difficult to make contact with anyone to be at the development because you get one number and just punch this number and then after you punch that number, then you've got to punch another number to go to another number. And, and very seldom have I ever actually made contact with someone. I think maybe a couple of times that I've actually made contact with a person, whenever I call, it was always, you know, referred from various numbers and then leave a message.
Back to the broader, I'm sorry.
No, that's what I was going to go.
Go ahead, okay. I was going to say, Doug, if, if there's, next, next time you have the opportunity to talk to the code enforcement, if there are things that they feel like, man, I sure wish, it doesn't feel right when I have to go give that notice for this particular case. If there are things like that, that you might want us to entertain as far as how we could change the ordinance to be a little friendlier, a little, a little more accommodating, then we can, we can consider those things. This one, I understand, is, is tricky for the fact that where does it stop? This is, you know, a very nice little example and I can see why the gentleman thinks, why, why do I have to, you know? It can be solved if you'll put a gate and a fence in front of it so it's not the end of the world. But it did, it did get me to start thinking, are there things that our code enforcement people just go, man, I wish I, we didn't have to mess with that. It saves us time, it's not necessarily, the, the juice is not worth the squeeze as far as the impact that we're going to have by, by making that change.
Sure.
I think we'd be interested in hearing about this.
Well, we want to change something just to change it because it makes it difficult for somebody. It has to make sense. And I know we would all agree to that.
Most of their circumstances are difficult because it only goes to them because.
Yeah, so just one more comment about, about the boat beside that. So that's a nice clean example, right? I mean, that's, well, you're also going to have people parking boats on the side of the house, it's grass. And parking down there.
Well, you can't do that.
Well.
That's, that's in the order, I wouldn't propose changing that.
I already know it, it's got to be least SB two. At least. Got to, got to be a. In border road material.
That's a good point, though, that sometimes other people, I mean, his department's in a position to notice, gee, this particular law isn't working very well, more than we are actually. I noticed last time I, when I was at the planning commission, they were talking about, gee, city council maybe really needs to look at changing this or that because, because they're in a position to see where maybe something, I think they're talking about putting more things in place, commercial, ahead of time, you know, anticipating the future.
Yeah, when they get variance requests over and over for something, it starts to make them think, maybe this ought to be a change in the ordinance rather than they keep coming in for variance.
But some of these things that are, a lot of these predate, even when I've been on council, but a lot of these things where we have the exact same law as the ACC, I think the city was trying to actually make it easier on citizens because people were complaining, oh, the city says one thing, ACC says another. So we were thinking, hey, let's, let's try to make it more understandable for them. Kind of like in their office next to ours.
If we followed that exclusively, we would have passed an ordinance that says there's no white fences and we're not going to do that.
Yeah. I'm not going to propose it.
We, there are certain, let me, let me just add a least, since I'm here, I might as well make it legal. There are things that they can do that we cannot do constitutionally.
Yep.
They can regulate, they do. In fact, we talk about signs, we have got a very comprehensive set of sign regulations. It has to be very particular because we have to abide by the First Amendment. We've got people that are trying to make speech and we have to, we can't restrict that. We've got First Amendment constitutional issues. The ACC doesn't. I mean, in fact, their rule says if it's a residential part of the city, no signs unless it's real estate, none. No vote for John Doe for governor, no presidential signs, nothing. And they can go and they can enforce that. Now, we can't have that rule, we don't, and we have a very comprehensive set of regulations because there's only so much we can do. But I don't, I don't think the people, a lot of people realize just how powerful they are to be, believe it or not. And, but they can do a lot, they can be arbitrary, they can be, if it looks right to us, we'll allow it. If it's the right tone of color, we can't adopt those, we, we could never adopt those kind of rules because we have to abide by due process and constitutional standards. So there is a benefit to a lot of things they can do that people, I think would miss if it didn't, didn't, didn't happen, I guess I would say.
If they would just be consistent in their, their enforcement.
All righty.
Good conversation. Thank you.
Doug, I just wanted to say, we have two people, sometimes three, that answer that phone during the day. I don't know how many walk-ins come in our office, but I would say ten an hour easily. So if they're helping someone at the desk, of course, the phone doesn't get answered and it rolls the voicemail. But I would invite any of you to come sit at the front desk for a day.
Yeah.
And see how many times the phone.
See the activity you actually experience.
Walk-ins.
We actually have an opening at the front desk.
We do.
So there's a seat available.
You can all take a couple hours a day.
We have some circumstances, I, we have, we have great citizenry around here. I'm just going to tell you the truth. We do have some little neighborhood scraps that develop and people love poking at each other. So they'll call, they'll, oh, I'm just going to call them about their boat. And then, oh, okay, I'm going to call them about that dog I saw. Next thing you know, you're into that.
Yeah.
We had a neighborhood, we were sitting in the office today that lasted over an hour.
Oh, man.
It's a civil issue, but, you know, the city gets brought into it, so that takes.
Most of it, Jerry. So we're going to keep doing this.
All righty. Good conversation, thank you. We shall see you next Monday. Emily, again, thank you.
You can put a sign up there if you want.